Okay, we'll start with our state budget amendment. We have a couple of budget amendments, most of them are just our normal year end close type things. We have one or two in here that are predictions for our fiscal year close. We also have our continuing budget resolution. Don't let me leave the podium without doing that. We'll need to continue to operate. So, the first one is our state budget. O-55 is our early college, just reclassing, make sure that we're able to spend every dime that the state gives us for that program. The next one that you see, the big numbers, is just the way that the state operates. What happens is we pay any annual leave out that people leave during the year, longevity payments, disability payments, that's a direct expense to the state. We record the budget at the end of the year. We're fairly close to the end of the year, so we know, we're pretty close to what that expense is, but we will have some that we pay at the end of June, so we don't know exactly. So, that's, the reason those are round numbers and not exact numbers is because we're not at the end of June yet. So, those are close, but not exact. But it, since it's a direct expense, that's why it's okay for that to be close. You'll see the grant for the panic alarms that we received from the state, $1,237. You'll see a minor interest adjustment for the technology fund of $23. So, that takes care of our state fund. We'll go on to the federal fund. Primarily reclasses here, year-end closing type entries for the federal fund. Okay? Um, okay.
Ms. Klutz, before you move, just one quick question on the federal fund there.
Yes.
The contract transportation for McKinney-Vento.
Yes.
Can you explain that?
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't recall seeing that in the past, but that doesn't mean it hasn't been there.
Okay. So, O-26 is the McKinney-Vento sub-grant that we talked about earlier in the day. It's only a $30,000 grant. We were paying a portion of salary out of that code. We're not paying that, so we had to move it into, it's out of, it's just a different function. We're taking it out of that salary code and putting it into the contract transportation, because obviously we have more than $30,000 worth of transportation costs. So, we're just getting it in, all into one spot, so that we can pay it all into transportation. Okay? Okay? The next one is our capital outlay budget. This is, when we presented this budget to you, we presented it in one lump sum, $15.5 million for this new school. When we submitted the budget to the county, it was submitted with a subsidiary breakdown, and the county adopted it line item detail. So, we are held to that, that line item detail at the moment. We're going to try to work through that later, but to get our books in alignment for the fiscal year end, we need for you to adopt the budget amendment to get us in order. So, these are the things that we know of right now, that we need to take care of just at this moment. And so, a little bit more in architecture, engineering, and land than what we originally placed in those line item detailed budgets. Yes, ma'am?
I had a question. It was on the federal funds.
Yes.
It was the one that was, says to reclass funds to purchase material for new teachers' orientation.
Yes.
What, is that, we're buying, is that what that total cost was?
That grant is for staff development for new teachers.
It's a grant we receive then?
It is.
So, we're getting the money? We're not paying the money?
No. We've gotten that money, and we're reclassing that money within that grant.
Oh, okay. So, it's money we got.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not paying. Oh, I'll take money.
You'll take it.
Okay. All right.
All righty. Okay. So, the capital, the new schools, okay? All right. And the final one, of course, is the local special revenue, local special fund, where we place our grants in this account. You'll see the various grants that we've received recently, in a minor reclass or so.
Phillips, do you have a question?
Could I just ask you to highlight the, it looks like there's a grant from the county Parks and Recreation to help with the Northwest Cabarrus High Track, High School Track?
There is a grant that we received from the Parks and Rec Department, $31,905 that goes toward that track project, yes.
Well, I think we should duly thank the Parks and Rec Department for that nice little grant.
Absolutely. That's wonderful for us.
Yep. And just briefly, they do a matching grant program, and every, it's about now, probably coming up in June, they'll have presentations, where they'll come, make their presentations, and I'll actually sit on that commission. So, I always vote for the school projects. I'll tell everybody out there's, I'll show my hand, but anyway, that, but yes, it is, it's a nice program. And in fact, I've been given a spreadsheet that, from 1970-something, of how many and all, and I keep meaning to give it to you guys, and it's sitting on my desk, and I have it. So, saying it out loud is my way of reminding myself that I'd like for you guys to see how many projects have been funded over a long period of time, and it's, it's a lot of money. So, it's been very good for us.
So, that does it for the budget amendments. We do have the continuing budget resolution. Do you want to do those separately?
One question on the state, on the state fund?
Yes.
You had the record annual leave and longevity and disability payments.
Yes.
The one you showed last year was 3.02 million, and now it's, this one says 2.59. Is that a reduction? Is, why the, why the, this was looking from last year when you presented the same, same thing.
Uh-huh.
It was more. Is it, why would it be so much less?
It's nearly, it's 3 million.
It's what?
It's 3 million.
Okay.
It's close, it's very close.
Okay. I'll ask.
Okay. Okay. Other questions?
Just a little question. On that $31,905 from Parks and Recreation, I remember a presentation, maybe this is a question for another member of the cabinet, I remember a presentation about a public-private partnership about the athletic fields or the facilities at Northwest and Bogart a few months ago. Is this $31,900 at all being coordinated with that public-private partnership and athletic facilities up there? Or is that it?
Is that?
I don't mean, I'm sorry if I'm mixing unrelated things.
Dave, you may have to come answer that. This is, he's, you're talking about the ball fields that the guy came in to make the present, Scott?
Different, different.
It's a different, this is different than that.
I apologize. Thank you.
But there is a fundraising effort that goes along with this particular project, too. And I guess that's what I was thinking about. We have all kinds of partnerships going on. Okay? All right. So, that's the budget amendments. We also have the continuing budget resolution that just, it allows us to continue to operate until we get, until we adopt a budget from July 1st to, until we get a budget next year.
Well, before, did you want to talk about that any further, or, okay. Does anybody have any objection of putting both items on the consent agenda? Saying none, we'll put the budget amendments and the continuing resolution on the consent agenda. Okay? Fantastic. We will move along, and we will ask Ms. Tara Nattress to come to the podium for 5.02 for our Title I plan. And board members, we, every year we get a report, and the system has to put a plan together, and we will actually have to formally vote to adopt the plan next week. So, we, if we're so inclined, we can do it at consent or action, but we will have to take action on the plan.
So, you took the words right out of my mouth. I won't do that intro part. But basically, no, that's perfect. You set the stage for me really well. So, we just need to finalize our application and make sure that this is approved for next week. So, before we get into some of the specifics, I just want to remind you of some of the key components of Title I. So, Title I is a federal grant. The big components of this to remember are that we need to supplement and do not supplant local and state funds. So, this is in addition to everything that we provide with local and state funding. We are able to use Title I funds for children from preschool age to high school. All of the funds that we receive must support identified Title I schools. So, you see in the executive summary, I provided for you the list of Title I schools that we're proposing for next year. That has not changed from this year. So, all of the funds that we receive for Title I will need to go to those schools. There is a requirement that we serve schools at or above 75% poverty. And we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the definition of poverty and some of the things we're doing. And then, we are required to serve and fund schools in rank order of poverty. And you'll see here that it says, "as determined by direct certification and the percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch." And I'm going to explain that when we get to the budget. But the primary goal of our Title I funds is to increase student achievement, really paying special attention to students and families who are most vulnerable and not meeting the standards. So, that's the overview and premise of Title I. Now, when we create the budget in the application, there are several things we have to do. The first thing we do is reserve our set asides. You will see in the budget that was the last page of the executive summary, that there are several set asides that we have to put forth before we give the money to the schools. So, the first one is for neglected and delinquent youth. That is a state-determined set aside. This past year, it was $7,500. So, that's what we've allocated for next year within that budget. And we use those funds primarily for tutoring for students at the Church of God Children's Home. It's not a large amount, but it does allow us the opportunity to provide tutoring for them. We also do a 1% set aside for parent involvement. Those funds go to the school. So, you saw in the budget, there was a parent rate over to the right side. That's a per-people amount for each school with a 1% parent involvement set aside, and that goes for exactly what you think it does, activities to involve parents. At the district level, we do also have funds for parent involvement. We're doing things like popsicle and playground events this summer for incoming kindergarten students at several of our schools. We have literacy nights, and we're doing this week, for example, at the Logan Community Center, we will have a kickoff summer reading program that we'll be leading. So, we use those funds to really engage our community and our parents in work. There's also the homeless children and youth set aside that John Basileis talked about earlier when he was talking about his work with McKinney-Vento. Those funds are typically used for tutoring programs. So, he talked about the Cooperative Christian Ministry Tutoring Program, so we use those funds for that. We also are able to use it to pay for Kids Plus, for students who need to be able to access programs. So, you had asked the question earlier about students participating in programs with other students, right? After-school programs and things where transportation may be an issue. We do use it for Kids Plus funding for those students, so that they can stay after school and participate in programs if need be. It's also used for testing fees for students, school supplies, and obtaining any documents that they might need. We also have to do a set aside for our non-public schools. We collaborate with them every spring. We met with them in April and are putting aside some funds in case there are schools who decide to use that funding, but basically it's to provide similar programs at the non-public schools, because the money follows children, as opposed to just staying within the district. So, if there's a student at one of our private schools who needs support, and they need after-school tutoring, and they meet specific qualifications, then we do provide some Title I funding for those students. We haven't used that set aside in many, many years. So, we do set it aside, and then we can reallocate those costs if we need to. Administrative costs are, we're allowed to use up to 12%. We don't typically go that high. Indirect costs fold into that, as do multiple salaries, things like printing, professional development, materials and supplies. So, you can see that amount in the budget. We also do some set asides for district initiatives. This year, we used it for math professional development that we'll continue to do next year, as well as a summer bridge program. So, you know, we've done a lot with summer school this year on the county level, and so we're looking at providing additional summer experiences for our students. So, we did set aside some money to provide it for other students next summer outside of the Read to Achieve components. And then, we also are required to set aside a certain amount of funds for our focus schools, which are Weddington, Wyancoff, and Wolf Meadow, to help close the achievement gap. So, we do set aside funds specifically for them. Okay? So, once those set asides are in place, then the remaining of the Title I funds go to schools based on per-people allotments, and you'll see that this is by using direct certification and free and reduced lunch applications. Until this year, we have always allocated Title I funds by using the free and reduced lunch applications that schools collect at their school site and use that for poverty. There are some changes that we're making with the child nutrition department, where we will have two schools that will use the community eligibility provision. So, they'll no longer have to collect free and reduced lunch applications. We will just be able to provide breakfast and lunch for those schools. So, if you look at the budget, you see Wolf Meadow and Royal Oaks, and it says CEP in parentheses. That's because we're using that data to qualify those students instead of free and reduced lunch applications. The difference is that you're going to see a much higher poverty rate, because what happens is that they take direct certification data, and direct certification data is the data for families who access certain social services, like TANF eligible families and other services that they can access. And they take that number, which is typically lower than the household application number, and we multiply it times 1.6. So, if you take that number for, it's either Royal Oaks or Wolf Meadow. If we take that number for Wolf Meadow, and we apply the percent of families who access those services, and we multiply it times 1.6, they're at 100% free and reduced lunch. If we use their household applications, they are not that high. So, it's really important to understand that now we're using two different data sources to qualify schools. Okay? So, Wolf Meadow and Royal Oaks are using the direct certification data that I just talked about. All of our other schools will use free and reduced lunch data. The 1.6 multiplier is to make it equal, or as equal as possible, across the county. When we ran the numbers with direct certification and multiplied it times 1.6 for all of the schools, it's very close. It might be a percentage or so different for the schools that have free and reduced lunch applications, but it's really, really close. We can't use direct certification data for the other schools, because their percentages end up too low. So, you'll see that difference this year in the budget. Okay? All right. We'll see if you have questions, if I explained that well enough. Hopefully, I did. So, I mean, two of the big things with district initiatives are this parent involvement piece. So, these are just some pictures, because we're really proud of the work we're doing right now with parent involvement and professional development. So, I've already talked to you about those set asides. Once schools receive their set asides, they have to develop a school-wide plan that includes the following 10 components. Most of these components are included in their school improvement plans. So, you'll see that in most of the work when you review school improvement plans and things in the fall. There are some other pieces that are required, like assisting preschool children in the transition to kindergarten. That's some of the work that we're doing with that set aside, so the popsicle and playground events. We're inviting families of incoming kindergartners. They're going to get to meet one another, do some literacy activities and things. So, we're trying to build that pre-K to kindergarten transition. So, the funds are allocated to the schools, and then the schools plan the use of the funds, so that they align with their school improvement plans. All right? It's important to note, when you're looking at the budget and the amount for each of the schools, that our free and reduced lunch rate as a county has increased significantly over the last several years. In 2006, our free and reduced lunch rate was 32.6%. It's now 43.1%. So, we've increased over 10% our free and reduced lunch rate. And that's not with the CEP, but just our general applications that we've had for this year. So, when you're thinking about school-level use of funds and how to allocate those funds, we want to make sure that we're able to impact the schools with highest poverty, provide early interventions, and make sure that we're serving as many of those kids who are kind of over that 50% mark. Last year, we decided it would be 50%, and make sure that they're getting the funds that they need. So, you can see on this last slide, some of the ways they use those funds. Professional development is 5%, so all kinds of different activities, from teachers being able to plan with curriculum apps, to workshops and things. Parent involvement, they have to spend 1% at the school site. The bulk of our Title I dollars go to teachers. So, to provide class size reduction, to increase planning time, those kinds of activities. So, we do use the bulk of the money for teachers. We also use it for contract tutors, technology, and then supplies and materials as needed to supplement some of the programs. Okay? So, that's an overview of our Title I program. You have the executive summary that explains the schools and things for this year. We're not proposing any changes to the schools. We grandfathered FUR in last year. They meet the 50% poverty rate this year, so they'll go back to full Title I funding, so we don't have to worry about them losing funding, as we were thinking about that at this time last year. So, I'll take any questions or comments that you all have.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Tara.
Sure.
We will, we appreciate the presentation, and we will start with Mr. Walter. Do you have any comments or questions?
Just, I mean, some of the things that I've heard from that group, some of it is parent transportation, not being able to get to the school. And the other one was language barriers. Are we addressing any of those two issues in any of these plans?
So, for, talk to me a little bit more about the transportation issues.
Wolf Meadow, for example. You have a lot of people in the Logan community can't get to the school for parent conferences, events, whatever. And that, I think, detracts.
So, we're doing several things. This past year, we had a curriculum night at the Logan Community Center, so parents could come to the Logan Community Center. We are having a literacy event there this Thursday, hopeful that parents will be able to walk or drive or get to at least the Logan Community Center if they can't go to the school. We are also going to be able to provide onsite tutoring at the Logan Community Center this summer for four weeks. It'll run parallel to our summer camp program. The other thing that we have talked with Dr. Auerbach about is trying to somehow transport parents from home to the schools for parent conferences and things, in addition to going to them. So, even with kindergarten registration this year, we did mobile kindergarten registration sites and went to the Logan Community Center to do kindergarten registration, so they didn't have to travel to the school. So, we are trying to do those kinds of things, either getting into the community or providing transportation to families to get to school.
Language barriers, issues, are we doing?
Language barriers, we work really closely with our translators, who are already in the system. One of the things with that supplanting side is that we are required, as a district, to make sure that all of our information is accessible to families, whether we had Title I funding or not. So, we work closely with Ben Alred, our ESL director, to make sure that we're having access for families.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you have any comments on our Title I application?
No, not this time.
Mr. Schumaker?
How does our funding work out this year versus last year? Because you remember, that was part of the concern of FUR being brought back in, and we gave like a 50% funding to try to make sure that we were getting enough funding for all the schools and...
So, it's a little bit higher this year. Last year, we were at about $3,500,000. This year, we're at the 4 million mark. So, that's why we felt okay about setting aside some money for summer camp programs this year for kids to do a summer bridge program, and also then could provide the funding to FUR to keep them at a rate that they were at prior to last year, when we reduced their funding. So, now, all of our schools have comparable funding to what they had last year, if you have a little bit more, based on their percentages. But we were able to add the summer program, and then also, FUR this year is at $278,000. Last year, with the grandfathering in, they were only at 74. So, they're getting that additional $200,000 back that they didn't have last year, because of how we grandfathered them in. So, that pretty much takes care of the additional funds.
What about, you said, you were talking about the summer camp.
Mm-hmm.
So, is this related to the same Read to Achieve summer camp, or is this something different?
So, we can't use Title I money to do any of the Read to Achieve work, because we're required by the state to have the Read to Achieve programs. But a couple of things that have come out of us offering Read to Achieve are that we'd like to have some early interventions for, say, some second graders. So, this year, we're working with the Academic Learning Center to be able to provide tutoring onsite at the Logan Community Center, Irvin, and Beverly Hills. So, we'll be able to do that with funding and a partnership through them. The other thing that we are trying really hard to do, in addition to pre-K to kindergarten transition, is to do fifth grade to sixth grade transitions. So, the funds we're setting aside for summer school for next year could address second graders. We also want them to help address fifth graders transitioning to middle school, to give them an opportunity to have whatever interventions they may need to go to the middle school and have instruction there, so that they can receive, they can get into middle school life a little bit before middle school starts. So, that's one of the other reasons for that set aside.
So, the Read to Achieve will have its own program, and then this is completely separate entity?
Yes. It's in addition to. This is what we have to do.
In addition to, and it's separate schools as well.
Mm-hmm. Most likely, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu, Mr. Harrison, Dr. Phillips?
On your slide two, it says, "must be used for schools that have 75," must serve schools at or above 75% poverty. But I take it that we may serve schools that are at 50% or above, because in your executive summary, it shows that several of the schools are not at 75% poverty.
We may serve schools above 35% with targeted assistance, and we may serve schools at 40% in school-wide programs. So, our district average is now 43%. So, last year, we raised it as a district to 50% for the minimum.
Okay. Right. And all of those schools that are on the list, those are school-wide programs, aren't they?
Yes.
So, I mean, even though this is supposed to help the children that are in poverty, it, in reality, is helping all the children at that school.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Okay, board members, I don't have any other further comments, so is everybody okay for consent? Let me nod of the head. Okay, Ms. Monroe, we will put that on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And Dr. Nattress, we certainly appreciate your time and your efforts. And we will ask Dr. Louder, who just had got off his feet, and now he's got to come back. And we will talk about policies. 5.03 policy revisions on first reading, and what we're going to do, give us a quick overview, I guess, if you want to, but we're going to go down each one. I mean, we're going to call the number out. If you have a comment, spit it out. If not, we're going to move on to the next one. So, and I think we got a lot of the, either grammar or spelling, just sort of that kind of thing, taken care of. So, we should be talking about whatever philosophical things that we're dealing with.
Right. And just to start as an introduction, I may want Mr. Enriquez to talk for a minute, because when we actually had our policy committee meeting, it was right after the Judge Hobgood ruling came out, which was the 25% and how it affected the state. We had kind of grouped these as personnel policies for that reason, and wanted to make sure that Ms. Jones and Mr. Enriquez, as HR and law, were both very comfortable that these are not things we're going to have to bring back to you because of the law change. And so, both of them felt very comfortable that the policies we were working on now were not anything that they had reservations on, since the law was kind of changing, and literally that ruling came out like a day or two before. So, Mark may want to speak to that just for a minute or so, because I know it's something that you guys may have questions about, since we're in the personnel area.
We did relook over the policies to see, and just as a reminder, that's the ruling that deals with teacher tenure and a decision by a superior court judge that the statute removing teacher tenure was unconstitutional. So, and that may be subject to appeals, and we'll see what happens, but right now, that's the ruling on the teacher tenure statute. And some of these policies, you know, talk a little bit about that, but I think we're both very comfortable that these changes are appropriate changes to go ahead and make, and willing to make most of these changes regardless of what happens with the final ruling on teacher tenure. So, I think our recommendation was, let's go ahead and adopt these policies. There obviously may be, you know, further changes or implications. There's the possibility of new legislation this session that may also change teachers. They're talking about tying teacher raises to a removal of tenure, but I'm comfortable that it makes sense to go ahead and take up these policies now. A lot of these are changes that we need to make. So, I think, and Glenn is on the same page.
Fantastic. And I want to apologize to Sue. I didn't welcome you, I didn't welcome you to the podium, and we certainly appreciate you being here as well. So, okay, so you just want to...
Yeah. First, first change, 7130 licensure. It just updates legal references, which is required, and primarily, that is the change. So, very little there to go with, except, again, some of the terms that Mr. Enriquez was talking about.
Okay, 7130?
I had...
Go ahead.
Just, and some of these other policies, we define some of these terms, and we don't define paraprofessional on here. Would it make any sense to clarify what that exactly is for?
To define paraprofessional, is that what you said?
Yes.
Which would be where the policy?
That would be second page, page two, first, the paragraph there.
Mark, do you have a comment on that?
We could try to list, I mean, it is a fairly broad term. I think we're talking about some social workers and other people that may fit into that category, but I don't know that there's a bright line. I welcome, I guess, Glenn's thoughts on whether we have any clear definition of what a paraprofessional is, or whether we want... I mean, it's drafted as somewhat, you know, a general language, because we may hire other positions or things, rather than try to list everything that would be a paraprofessional. So, I don't know that we have tried to define that.
I just look at it from a readability, make it as easy to read as possible. If we're looking at these policies anyway, let's make it so you can actually understand some of what we're talking about. I didn't quite understand what that was at first.
Mr. Walters, which, where are you looking at?
7130, C.
Okay. That's actually referencing, we're talking about parental notification for a teacher or a paraprofessional who is a teacher assistant. So, paraprofessional is actually a teacher assistant or instructional assistant. And if we're having to make notification in a Title I school, that we have a teacher teaching in a substitute, let's say we have a teacher that goes down on leave of absence for more than four weeks, and we have to put somebody in there that's certified, but they're not certified in that particular, not elementary certified, but let's say they're middle grade science, we try to never do this. So, please understand, this is just an example. But if we had to put a teacher in there that was not elementary certified, then we have to send a parental notification home. Likewise, if we had a teacher assistant that did not meet the no child left behind guidelines of being highly qualified, having the two-year degree, and all of ours do, but if we had to do that, that's where it's talking about a paraprofessional.
I think I understand that. I'm just, my point being is, if I'm a layperson reading this, what is a paraprofessional? And you're just saying it's a teacher assistant.
It is.
Most people would understand teacher assistant, may not understand what paraprofessional. That's all, my point being, shouldn't we make this a little bit easier to understand? In some of our other policies, when we talk about licensed support staff, we define what that is. And another policy we have in here, we talk about school administrator, we define what that is. We just don't define it here. That was my comment on this policy.
Okay. I think that's open to, you know, the board wanting to include that definition there.
Well, I'm fine with including it.
I'm trying to remember if the language from the Title I notification, I mean, I think it says paraprofessional is what it says in the statute, but that doesn't mean we can't try to help someone, a layperson reading, and understand what it is. So, we could add a parenthetical to kind of explain what that is. I think that might be helpful to folks, and I'm fine to do that. So, we'll add that.
So, just adding a...
Are there multiple places where something's not defined, Rob, in these policies?
This was the only one I saw.
Okay. All right. I mean, I was going to suggest that at the policy committee level, maybe just go through a wash and figure out if you've got areas that aren't defined, but if this is the only one that's showing up on this group, then...
For most that I read, I thought this was one that... It could have come over as confused.
Well, then, Mark, come up with, you know, something that you can propose to give to Sue and Chris, and then we'll go from there. Okay, 7425?
School administrator contracts. Again, this is just updates legal references. No real change in the policy, it's just referring to law cases for school administrators' contracts.
Okay. 7805?
That just updates a hyperlink and includes one small editorial change, which is just available at. So, again, essentially, it's a hyperlink change.
And I think my point was, we said superintendent shall meet with the board. Is that a closed session, or is that open session? It doesn't, it's not defined there. And that's on page three, top.
You talking about the evaluation?
Which one are we at? 7508?
7805, superintendent evaluation.
Anything to do with the evaluation will be closed session.
Okay, but it's just not defined.
It's personnel.
It's not defined. It's not referenced.
Does it need to be? And I'm not asking you, I'm looking at Mark.
I think adding a reference to the closed session provision probably makes, we could do that under the reference section. I don't, I mean, if you want to specify committing closed session, I'm fine doing that. I mean, those would be closed session because it's a personnel item. We can make that, we can make that revision for clarity, if you want to do that.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else on 7805? 7821?
So, 7805, we were adding the closed session part, correct?
Yes.
Okay. 7821, again, this is update of legal references for removal of personnel records.
Any comments on that one? Okay, 7410, teacher contracts.
This is an optional new policy regarding teacher contracts. There's a few notes for this one. This policy describes performance expectations. The policy's been added to the PLS manual for several reasons. First, the number of contract boards we'll vote on. I think this was primarily with no tenure, or even the elimination of tenure for younger teachers. You're talking about you guys reviewing much more than you did in the past. That's where the big change here is, because of the number of contracts that will come without tenured teachers. Again, Mark making, can come in on that, and then there's a hyperlink. I think we had one question, which was, should the board superintendent and teacher expectation, as it's related to students, be consistent? I guess Glenn is going to speak to that.
Well, I was just going to say, 7805 deals with the superintendent evaluation, and that language is lifted actually straight from the superintendent instrument, whereas 7410 is specific to teacher contracts and with expectations covered in state board policy for teachers under TCP C004.
What is this replacing?
We don't, we don't actually, it's a new policy, so it's not, we have, we haven't had, we've had teachers that are either probationary teachers, or then career status or tenured teachers. But really, this policy is designed to address teachers that may be serving under contracts, either potentially four-year contracts, which is what would be contemplated under the 25% statute that now has been held unconstitutional, and potentially, people that would previously have been up for some type of career status. If career status is in fact eliminated, those teachers will now be hired under contract basis. So, it's really a new policy to deal with both, you know, long-term and potentially short-term contracts. You know, I think it's likely, Glenn and I have talked about the fact that we'll probably have a number of one-year contracts, if tenure is in fact eliminated. And the court ruling was you can't take away tenure, that there's a due process interest in tenure. Again, subject to appeal, we'll see what ultimately, but that, the ruling was that you can't take a property right in tenure away from teachers. That opinion did not indicate that you could not remove it prospectively, and the law says no one else shall be granted tenure. So, it is my view, and Glenn agrees, we cannot award tenure or career status to any new folks, even people that have been here four years and would otherwise be eligible. We're going to be recommending people for one-year contracts, because we can't be awarding new career status in light of the current statute. That part of the law, saying there will be no new career status awarded, was not held unconstitutional, so that still stays in place. And again, I don't know what the legislature may do, you know, they're talking about, again, they're not really talking about restoring the ability to gain career status. The real discussion is if and how you're going to lose it, whether it's tied to pay. So, I think we are going to, this new policy, 7410, will be the way a lot of our teachers are employed going forward. They'll be on one or longer-term contracts.
Well, given that is background, when I read this, it's just like, you know, it's motherhood and apple pie. Employment contracts for teaching will be granted or renewed only for individuals of proven ability who strive for excellence. Now, come on, is that going to stand up in a court if we don't give somebody a contract and we say, oh, well, you weren't striving for excellence? How in the world is that defined?
Well, you know, do you want to answer that? Try to answer it. I mean, you're right, it's not, you know, a measurable metric, but I think the reason this, the reason that, and this is the, this is the suggested language from the School Board Association, the idea is to maximize your ability to say, these teachers are not meeting our standards for excellence, and we're not going to renew it. The legal standard is, you know, it just, when you're up for renewal, during the term of your contract, you have to be terminated for cause, but when your contract is over, it's essentially like an at-will employee. You can choose to renew or not renew, and you could choose to not renew because you think there's somebody else out there that can do the job better, and you've got a higher qualified teacher that didn't strive for excellence. So, you're right, it's not, it's very different than a dismissal standard, where you've got to show, you know, the burden is on the school system to show why this teacher has engaged in conduct warranting dismissal. For renewal, you know, it is, it is a more, a standard where you can simply say, we're not going to recommend it because they're not sufficiently striving for excellence. Again, and this is, although this is the proposed language, we could talk about other language. I think the goal would be to, you know, it is fairly aspirational in saying, you know, we only want to renew teachers we want to keep, is how I would put it in lay language, is really, we're going to, we want to, you know, the teachers that are doing well will get new contracts, but, you know, we don't, we're not committing to give everybody a new contract.
But my point would be, wouldn't it be more fair to actually state what it is we're looking for, and these are the expectations, rather than just strive for excellence? I mean, it's just, people are only going to give you what you ask for, so you got to tell them what we're asking for, and then that's what they'll strive for.
I think that's a good, good question, and I don't, you know, without beating a dead horse, we do have two board members that are on the policy committee. Would you guys like to comment on, because this, again, you know, for, I think you all get this, this is not just Dr. Lauter bringing us what he thinks we need to change. This is a committee that is dealing with various recommendations from state, community, school board association, the legal community, court decisions. Mark sits on the committee, is with Carolyn and David, so, you know, it kind of goes through the committee before it gets to us, so, you know, but Jeff asked a good question. So, David, would you like to comment on that any further?
Only that Dr. Phillips is prescient as usual, and that this is fluff, and that this is marshmallow, right? This is meringue. What are we going to do with it? I mean, we are, we are taking it because the State Board of Associate, School Board Association has promoted it to us, but what's the substance of this document as it is written? Not, not, not some general intent behind it, but the actual words on the page.
I guess, but, you know, the question is, if you're going to have a general policy level statement about who we want to renew contracts for, you know, I think you need to use fairly broad language. The decision that, you know, to extend a new contract is made individual by individual, and the standards and expectations are going to vary depending on, you know, where that teacher is in their career, what they're teaching, what the circumstances is. So, it is going to be very hard to have at a board policy level, some kind of detailed, here's your checklist, you know, of what we're doing.
And it references, Mark, 70, I apologize, but it references policy 7810, which sets the minimum expectation for teacher performance, I believe, as proficient. But if you look in the third paragraph, we're supposed to use, the board is to use evaluation data for a current teacher, and it says, see policy 7810, evaluation of licensed employees. And I think if we go to that one, we were pulling that up, that that sets the expectation for performance at the minimum of proficiency, which we could add here, but I think that's why it's referencing it there in the general.
Okay, board members, we want to move on, we want to kick it back to the committee, but, I mean, Jeff, I understand what you're saying. Carolyn, did you want to comment on it?
Well, I'm with Jeff. Maybe that is, I mean, that's saying, I mean, if we really wanted to say, we'd say, hey, we want everybody to be stellar. I mean, we won't, we would say, we want a number 10. I mean, because we do want the best. But let's be realistic, are we really going to get that every, every time out of the chute? I mean, maybe we do want to send it back, maybe for some more wordsmithing. I mean, I have no problem with that. We took the recommendation from the board, we were looking at the legal aspects of it. Really, that's what our committee was looking at, I'll be honest with you. When these came to us, we were looking at what the courts had put to us, and I think that's what our committee was looking at. And, and looking at the wordsmithing of it, I could see where we may need to look at it again, because this was a new policy.
And if, and I mean, an option that I don't, I think would be fine, to me, is to just strike, if that sentence, the kind of aspirational, you know, we're only going to extend contracts for individuals of proven ability who strive for excellence, if we just want to delete that. I mean, the rest of the policy talks about being familiar with the instructional standards, it references our whole criteria for evaluation of licensed employees. I'm fine with it. I mean, I think the meat of it, in terms of complying with what their duties are as a teacher, and complying, and the evaluation, I mean, the reality is, we would look for what their evaluations are, which does measure in detail what their performance is, is a key component. So, again, I think it's, you know, it is aspirational, but if the board feels like that's an unrealistic standard or too much fluff, I don't think we substantially change the policy. I'm fine just deleting that sentence on, you know, proven ability who strive for excellence. I don't think that substantively changes that much, and if the board's uncomfortable that that's an unrealistic standard, that seems to me one option you could do now, and you could certainly send it back for other language, and welcome your thoughts, Glenn, but I don't know that that is a key sentence.
Well, I certainly agree with you, this is meant to be...
Well, I'm going to jump in. If Mark, you know, we've done four policies in 20 minutes. If Mark says that it's okay to pull that sentence, and that's the sentence that gave us grief, we're going to pull it, we're going to move on to the next one. So, pull that sentence, and we're moving on to 7540, because I didn't hear anybody have any objection to any of the rest of the policy.
7540 is, again, it's just changing legal reference. This is voluntary shared lead, and how you can be charged by law, and then hyperlink, so updating a legal reference and changing one word.
Should we also, in that last sentence, refer to some policy of dismissal, not just applicable law? Last second, sentence of the second paragraph?
So, any employee found guilty of giving or receiving compensation may be subject to dismissal as outlined by applicable state law, and the applicable state law is the School Board Association's request to change, or recommendation to change.
Which I think I like the state, the School Board Association change. I'm not sure I understand your point.
Do we have, we have policies on dismissal, shouldn't they be?
You mean, under the, should, should we have a cross-reference to our dismissal policy?
Yes.
Yes, we can certainly add, yes. I think, I'm with you now. That we can add, under the, under the cross-reference section, our policy on dismissal or demotion of classified employees, we'll add that cross-reference.
All right, tell you what, I'm going to ask another question, because we can add is different than we really should add. I mean, I don't want to just add stuff just because, well, it sounds pretty good.
I think that's a useful cross-reference, since we're referencing dismissal, it's fine. I think that's a useful addition, let's add.
Okay, and we'll list that under cross-reference.
That's what we need. All right. Go to 7811?
Yes, growth printout plans, again, a little bit longer as the law changes. It updates references to the, to 115C 325, that's required change. The first paragraph has an editorial switch, again, referencing career status and non-career status, part of the stuff that Mark referred to at the beginning, and updates legal references again. So, again, this is basically lining up that plan with the new law changes in non-tenure, and how teachers fit into that mold.
And did you get my email about adding a hyperlink to that principal evaluation process?
Wait, say that again.
As we do the superintendent evaluation, there's a hyperlink to the state's website. There's a similar thing for this North Carolina school executive principal and assistant principal evaluation process.
And we certainly can add that hyperlink there. One of the reasons that I think that they don't do that is because those links tend to sometimes not stay updated, and we keep the most recent ones on the CCS HR website, but we can add the hyperlinks there for each one of those.
Well, we did it with the superintendent policy, I think we should probably just do it here, too, but I understand that, that point.
Okay. Add hyperlink there.
Okay. 7820?
Personnel files, again, changes the law reference, applicable state law, that's required, changes probationary teacher to non-career, that's required, and updates the legal references again. Same, same as the last one, just lining up with the new law.
And then my point to that was, we've been, we've been recently defining what days mean, as in school days, calendar days, something to that effect. I think we should do the same thing here.
And Mark, you may need to speak on that one, that was something we discussed.
Yeah, and it's true, some of our policies actually do define... Yeah. And it's true, some of our policies actually do define days as school days, you know, and some do not. But I'm, I'm okay with adding a school day definition. I do, I mean, I think when we're using the shorter periods of time, like five days, it is school days, and I'm okay with making these references, each of these say, school days.
So we'll change personnel files, that policy to school days.
I think that policy will reference the school days. It is confusing, because there are a couple of other things that are statutory deadlines, other things that are calendar. So I think your point is well taken. These are school days, and we should continue. I appreciate you reminding us to look at how we're using days as we go through the different policies. Because some were very explicit, others would just say days.
Mark, can we just get clarification on D2F? That was the one where it talks about notifying law enforcement.
That's right. And you did want that to be calendar, right? I'm sorry, you're right.
That needs to be calendar days, and the other one needs to be school days.
Thank you. I did agree with you on that, and I forgot to, yes. The notification to law enforcement, I think, is, most of these are school, that one should be five actual days, because we need a quick turnaround on the law enforcement notification.
That was on D2F, Mr. Walter. The C3 should be, be school days, but D2F needs to be the other.
Okay, 7900?
7900.
Again, changes legal references required, new state law, exactly the same. We're just lining up resignation with new law changes.
Any comments?
And that's calendar days for the same reasons. Is that correct? So it has to stay calendar day also.
All right, 7920.
7920, reduction in force, adds a new requirement, and updates terminology with new state law that's required, same as before. I know Mr. Harrison has some questions about this policy too, especially in regards to the Senate budget and teaching assistance. And Ms. Jones looked at that and has some answers to that.
Well, this particular policy deals with professional certified staff. And we have a separate policy, 7921, that covers classified personnel reduction. And we agreed with you on page two that see what, that was a redundancy there. But moving to 70, moving to page three of that, when they list out the recommendations that you utilize for the reduction in force, those are pretty specific. They may sound like they can be lumped together, but when you start looking at number two and number nine, they're very different. Areas of licensure would be like math, science, language, reading, et cetera. If you look at number four, when you're talking about joint licensure, we may want to consider those people that are math, science duly licensed, or language arts and social studies. And then length of service is really different from career status, because we still have career status until 2018 at least. So those things are different. And then looking down at the bottom, again, that was on, under exclusions, again, that kind of generic, those employees whose performances are deemed outstanding. And really, that's, again, intended to be general so that all aspects of the performance can be taken into consideration, not just the evaluation instrument, but all the other components that go with that. On page four of four, under termination, reemployment, that's where if we do a reduction in force of certified staff, we are required to put them on the list of available employees to look at in the future. And that's a little bit different than a waiting list. A waiting list would imply some order, that we would have to call them back, whereas the other, just a list of available employees, we can look at those folks with regard to licensure and their performances and those kinds of things. And then down under G, non-renewal of an employee. And that's where it gets a little tricky, because now you're going to have this year-to-year contract. But while teachers are under contract or certified folks, they're not ever at-will. When, at the end of that contract, then they could be considered, you know, at-will, and we not renew it at the end of that year. But that's typically a term that we use for classified folks and not for contracted employees. Any answer?
Okay. Thank you, Glenda, for that. We'll move on to 7930.
Again, as we said before, just references to law, they changed the word licensed and professional employees instead. And then we used all legal updates.
Any comments on that one? No? 7950?
Deletes references to career status. This one's a little bit longer. Deletes section B, makes moderators, again, these are just lining up with the law. There's some cross references there. Do we have any questions on that policy? He just takes out career status, again, replaces some of that language. It's just a lengthier policy.
Some of those days, again, are they not defined? Can we define those?
Are those, that we can make school days or calendar date? He was looking for the definition of days for that one, too.
In 7950, we'll look at that one.
Yeah, we can do that.
There's.
But yes, let's add, we'll add those.
Yeah, we could look at the days on that to see which ones.
We'll add either school or calendar, depending on whether it tracks in statute.
That's all of them on first reading? Okay, fantastic. Any other comments on those before we go? All right, we'll move on to 5.04. Everybody okay with those on consent?
We had a question on this one.
Okay. Alene, those will go to consent. And we'll move on to 5.04, policies and revisions on second reading. First one is 1320 slash 3560. It may take a minute for us to catch up on our devices.
It's right here. Yeah. And Mark agreed with that, that we can take that out.
Right. We did have a suggestion to, it said, beginning with data from 2007, 2008 school year and moving forward. We just had a question of why it referred to that. And I believe Mr. Enriquez said, yeah, we can take that out. So we'll, we'll strike that reference to '07 and '08. And that was the only thing we saw. We do that, we're good.
Any comments on that one? All right, 2121?
I think this was actually brought up in, in the last ones, and for us, for the committee to discuss the conflict of interest. Was it conflict of interest?
No.
I'm sorry. No, it's the next one. I'm sorry. I don't think we had any questions for this one, did we?
Questions on 2121? No? Okay, 2130?
2130. The board member compensation, if you remember, there's a little bit of discussion of the language, the chair, the vice chair, and kind of compensation for, I think there was even some discussion about how people were compensated, depending on what they participated in. And we were kind of directed to go back and discuss that as a committee. The recommendation of the committee, and Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Harrison could speak to that, and I think of Mark, was not to change that, to leave that as it reads currently.
Okay. So Mark says, leave it alone? Okay.
And the committee did. And again, Mr. Harrison and Ms. Carpenter may can speak to that.
Okay. You guys want to comment on that? Or, I mean, that seems pretty straightforward. We've got legal counsel, so. All right, 2321?
Yeah, he had a question about closed sessions.
Yes. This one. I think this, Mr. Walter at least raised an issue about the other groups being kind of vague as to who those other groups are. I actually suggest leaving, the challenge is, there may be varying groups that are subject to open meetings law. We may have a task force, we may have a board committee, or some other group that is subject to open meetings law, and thus needs to go into closed session. So I think, I think the goal would be to make it clear that, in general, any group that we have affiliated with us that would need to go into closed session could. So actually, I think rather than try to list those groups, I suggest leaving the proposed language, other groups subject to the open meetings law.
Did you comment further on that? You okay with that? Okay. 4250, 5075, 7316, that are all tied together. North Carolina Address Confidentiality Program.
Yeah, we had no questions for that one.
Any board members, any comments on that? Nope. 4345?
We had no comments there.
Any comments there?
It was right here.
4345, no comments. 6340, transportation, service vehicle contracts?
This is one, actually, I think Mr. Walter suggested a cross-reference. Originally, I wasn't sure. I thought it might be confusing. I've gone back and looked at it. It relates to the charter school transportation. And given the last paragraph, I think it probably isn't, is appropriate to add to your suggested cross-reference. So I think we can add it there. I'm still candidly a little, the last sentence, kind of, the whole, first part of the policy talks about us contracting with commercial buses and other folks. And then it's got this kind of tag on about, well, we can also talk to charter schools about transportation. I'm not quite sure why they've put that last paragraph in this policy, but if it's there, I'm fine with a cross-reference. So, bottom line, I think we can add a cross-reference to the statute talking about charter school use. And I think that, with that change, I'm fine.
We just put down, add to what's at the bottom.
Otherwise, it's exactly like you said. It's very confusing. What does that mean?
Right.
But still, add in addition to the cross-reference that refers to charter school law, correct?
Yeah, I do now. And at one point, I wasn't sure we should add it, but my, my view now is we should.
Okay.
Okay, so that's 6340. 6523, I think we did have some questions about that. We wanted to, there were a couple of things we wanted to double check on, I believe.
Yeah. And in essence, the gist of that, I think the discussion by the board was vehicle logs and how to monitor. We talked about the number of miles that people live from their workplace. So we took that back and had quite a lengthy discussion with the policy committee. And, and I really do want the two board members just to kind of chime in here as much as possible. After all that discussion, what the committee and the board members both recommended, along with Mr. Enriquez, was not to limit those things, that there, that 20 miles was somewhat arbitrary. So let's not do that. Let's leave that up to the supervisor based on the need, or what may be a crucial need in one department versus another department. Ms. Klutz also came to the meeting to talk about some of the things that we've done monetarily, when we're talking about tax consequences, and we were covered and didn't need to make a change with that. And also, that we had the capability to track or trace anybody that we wanted to. So in other words, if we suspected anybody, we could activate their phone to be able to, to track them. We could require them to then do logs. So we were still going to include a log, and that if anybody wanted to use it, there's a measure there, and that's possible. But it was the feeling of most of the people there that putting that in, that guys that may report to 10 or 12 schools in a day, that some of the things here were required was not what we were looking for. Instead, we wanted to be able to say, we have the, the ways to maintain or monitor anybody that we want to, but do we want to put that on the front end? And essentially, the committee said no to that.
Did you just say you eliminated the 20 miles?
The.
It's still in here.
Well, it was, again, we were bringing back to kind of find out. But the ultimate recommendation of the committee was to say, why are we doing that? But it was in before, so it was something that we wanted to discuss for a minute.
The question was, why are we doing, why are we pulling out, or why is the arbitrary number in?
Why is the arbitrary number in? And, and to be honest with you, that discussion, especially from the board members that were present, was a little bit different than I anticipated. So when we got there and said, well, let's just recommend that we not put a number in, that we leave that up to the department and the supervisor, that was the recommendation of the committee. But it is one that I felt like the whole group discussed more so than some of the others. And we wanted to make sure we brought that back for you guys to approve or disapprove.
Okay. So we need to, in its current form is what you're recommending?
Well, I mean, I think what the committee said was, let's just take the number out completely. And I believe Mr. Schumaker talked about that a little bit with the group. And then it was kind of, take this back to the committee, and y'all come back and tell us what you recommend from that. That's, that's my recollection. And so that's what we're doing. The committee's recommendation is, let's not put a number in.
Okay. So the committee is right, so what's here is not the recommendation, because the 20 is in here.
Right. That's why the 20 is there, again, to bring up. Because when we left, that was it. But we were directed to discuss that a little bit.
Okay. Well, board members, hold on a second. I've got multiple people keyed up. Hold on one second. So, we'll, we'll, if you've got a comment on 20, I guess whether the 20 stays or anything else other in this policy, then we'll go ahead. Dr. Phillips, do you have a comment on that?
Well, I thought the 20 was a rather reasonable limit. I mean, otherwise, it could get very excessive. You could have somebody that's living up in the mountains that decides that's a nice thing, because they could just wear out a school vehicle instead of their own. So I think it's reasonable to put some kind of a limit on it.
Okay. Mr. Harrison, you'd keyed up before.
Just generally, that, you know, we worked on this quite a bit at the board level, as well as at the committee level. And what occurs to me is we, we're trying to put one shoe size on multiple, you know, different situations. The policy, as well as the administrative guideline, that document that's also added here, it needs to be broad enough so that the responsibility and the onus, quite frankly, is on the supervisors of the individuals who have possession of and are entrusted with these assets of, of the school system. Our oversight should be predicated on, on their, you know, use of that policy and these guidelines. Dr. Shepherd's ultimate, you know, personnel decisions or, or actions at that level, you know, should be flexible enough to be able to make sure that we're using the resources of the system well. I, you know, 20 miles, 2119, I'm not sure what the perfect number is. I know we're trying to add some, something specific to the policy. But the actual use of the policy is going to be up to the supervisors who maintain these fleets of vehicles. That's what I think the policy ultimately ought to address, as opposed to trying to micromanage each of the supervisors with the same size requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Schu, do you have a comment on that?
Well, just briefly, because I was one of the strong advocates for having a number there, simply because, and it's just like Mr. Harrison said, you know, the same shoe size don't fit everybody. But there's where the supervisory part comes in. But if you look at 20 miles a day, one way, that's 40 miles a day, 200 miles a week. And you look at that at eight or 10, or however many people we have driving these, it turns into tens of thousands of miles, which turns into a big expense. And that's one of the things that we're trying to look at, is, you know, is the expense and trying to have control. I mean, I'm not going to fuss about it one way or the other. But I do think, though, that it needs to have some type of a stipulation in it, as you have it here, 20 miles. And it needs to have, more importantly than that, those supervisory content, so that, you know, we don't have people running 16, 70 miles a day, because it turns out to be a huge expense. And that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Schumaker, do you want to comment on this?
Is this a board policy?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. That part is, yes.
But we are proposing a board policy governing use. So I think the decision, there's also administrative guideline. But right now, I think that what's before the board is, do you want to have the 20 miles in a board policy? You could potentially have it not in a policy and in a guideline. But right now, the discussion is, should that be in item six, if be in, you know, near the end, item six, the 20 miles is in there in the policy itself right now.
And remember, this is not one from the state school. This is completely locally-written policy based on what you guys requested.
Right. I think a policy that gets into that level of detail is not a policy. It's now an execution document. And execution belongs at the management level, which is Mr. Meehan's level, Dr. Shepherd's level. I think, as they watch their budgets, that's when they need to draw the lines in the sand as to how far a vehicle can go, or what, what needs to be done. And they need to manage that money. I think for us as a board, to try to put this stipulation on means that now we have to have some type of audit that comes back to us, because we need to know if this policy is being enforced. And so now we have to put audits in place and have reports back to us, because we need to make sure that this policy is being enforced. Because we put a stipulation in there. And I think that, when you put that number in there, now you said, this board wants you to report back to make sure that nobody's driving over 20 miles away from a school. And I don't think we want that level of responsibility. I think that Dr. Shepherd's team is responsible for that. And I think for us to start putting little bits of detail in, in, in a policy, and not leaving it to the management team, and what they're paid big dollars to do, sorry, maybe middle, middle dollars, but they're paid to manage the organization and to, and its execution. And I think it's up to them to watch their budgets. And if it looks like things are getting tight, and it looks like the consumption of gasoline and fuel at that level is out of line, they need to get on the stick and have it pared down and, and do whatever it takes to figure out who the abusers are, and, and make sure that we don't have that. I don't think we, as a board, need that responsibility. We have other things that we need to be worried about. And I don't want to have a report in here telling me how many vehicles went over 20 miles. You know, who's watching that? I, I think that's Dan's responsibility. I think it's Dr. Shepherd's responsibility. And that's just the way I am.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, I have to respectfully disagree with you. Each year, you set the budget.
Well, I have to respectfully disagree with you. Each year, you set the budget, and it's your job to decide how much money is spent each year, and you have to decide that.
But I don't manage it.
Well, you've got to decide that each year, and you have to set that budget, and you're going to have to decide where those dollars come from, and that's what you're elected to do. So you've got to decide, and if he overspends that money, you're going to have to decide where that money's going to come from. So, I mean, even though you don't have, you're going to have to make that final decision, and that is your decision. And so, I mean, when it boils down to it, you're going to have to make that decision. And where, what I worry about is if they drive twenty miles, or if they drive fifty miles, they're putting wear and tear on that car. And so, you know, I worry about that, because that wear and tear, you're going to eventually have to buy another truck. So I think that some kind of mileage should be put on it, but our committee did discuss this, and one of the big things that we did discuss was, you know, they were concerned about putting a mileage log in, and it was discussed that they could put, they do have the capability of putting a GPS, a G, I can't even say it, the GPS on there where they can check the mileage and everything, so they wouldn't have to put the log in there. But I still have that concern where if somebody does travel fifty miles a day back and forth, say, one way, in one way fifty miles, that could be a hundred miles a day. And so, my concern is, if they did that, that could really add up the miles. And so, I would like to see a mileage in there, even though our committee said that they didn't see a problem with not having it in it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, you know, that arbitrary number, I guess that's somewhat difficult to say, but I also think there ought to be something in there. And, I mean, really, it's Cabarrus County Schools' vehicle. If it's leaving Cabarrus County Schools' boundary area, I think we ought to know about that. But I would change the beginning here, after the word facility, to or, one or more of the following conditions are met, and then approval granted by the employee supervisor. That puts the burden on the supervisor, that that's an acceptable distance, whatever that distance happens to be outside the boundary. Employee has on-call status or must respond to system emergencies during normal working hours. You have to be fairly close to be able to do that. Employee is allowed to drive a system vehicle to and from the home as a condition of employment. Apparently, it was brought to our attention a while back that there are employment contracts that say that we're going to do that. Well, if there is, then, you know, that would meet one of those conditions. I do think we need an accountability piece here somehow, so somebody doesn't abuse it. We don't see somebody like you, like we've been talking about. I think the GPS is an easy thing to do, you know, just keep it on. If there's an issue with that employee, somebody calls, says, hey, we see this truck over here, it shouldn't be there, or whatever, you can verify where someone's been, when, what time, all that information, as opposed to log. I mean, you could have somebody log. A lot of private industries, they require folks, if they're taking a vehicle to log every time they use the vehicle. I don't, I think that is a little onerous on an employee, but I do think we do need an accountability piece. That's my thoughts on it.
Okay, so that's, by my calculation, that's four that want the twenty in there. So, but Rob?
Enriquez was going to say something, I think.
I don't, I know we talked to the committee. I don't think that the committee felt that that should be an or. In other words, if you're going to have a mileage limitation, you need that plus approval. It's not enough to simply, you don't eliminate the need to have approval or one of these other conditions if you're more than twenty miles. So I think that is an and, not an or. In other words, it's a distance, you could eliminate, the committee definitely talked about eliminating a distance requirement. It sounds like the board may want to keep that in there, but then I think it would be the way it is. The only other point, and I think it's already been made by somebody, that we did have a long discussion about the log books, and at least the committee's recommendation was that that should be up to the supervisor to require it as needed when there's a sense that we need to monitor it. And there are other ways to monitor it with the GPS, which Ms. Carpenter mentioned, but it's really, it may be an unnecessary burden to say, everybody must do it, even if there's no indication you've been doing travel or unreported travel. And it's better to let a supervisor say, I'm not going to require it now, but if I see the odometer readings go up in a way that I'm concerned, you're going to have to start keeping a daily log. But the committee at least didn't feel like they wanted that as a requirement for every vehicle. Again, the board could impose that, but the committee's view was that they wanted to leave that up to individual departments and supervisors on the recording a log. Again, I understand the board's comments on the twenty-mile limit.
Okay, well, I think, to me, the log piece that goes back, we'll push that back to the supervisor level. If you guys feel like you need to take additional steps, take them. The temperature of the board was to leave the twenty miles in there, so that's what we'll do.
So we keep it as written, right?
I think, based on Mark's analysis, we will keep it as written.
Do we need to put anything in there to say if we think a problem arises, the supervisor has the right for a GPS or a log? Does something need to be written in there?
Okay, thank you, Mark. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Yeah, you can pull that one off and put it on action.
Yes, put it on action.
Okay, so sixty-five twenty-three will be on action, Ms. Monroe, and sixty-five twenty-three AG?
That is not a policy. That's just the guideline that goes with it. So, we, I think, corrected that to the specification, so that'll be there as a guideline for people who manage people who have a vehicle.
Okay, gotcha.
And the log will be there with it, too, in case they want to use it.
Okay. Anybody have a comment on that? We want to put that on action with the other one? Are they paired together? Is that, okay, we put that on consent? Okay, that one will be on consent, Eileen. Okay, thank you, Sue and Chris, we appreciate it. We'll move on. Five point oh five, we'll ask Dave to come back to the podium. Purchase agreement for foster property adjacent to Old Odell.
Good evening. So this is the six point three seven acres. It's adjacent to the current, the former Odell School property. We've conducted a phase one environmental site assessment. We've conducted boundary and topo surveys. We've conducted a wetlands survey. We have an appraisal. The board has an option to purchase this property. We see no reason why not to purchase this property. The superintendent is recommending the purchase of this property. It did come in less than the appraised value, so it does appear to be a good deal for the school system and for the taxpayers. So we do pursue and hope for approval of this item.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Board members, we've talked about this on numerous occasions, a couple of different times. This is just a formal step for us to give the school system the power to encumber the system to buy the, to go to closing. We're trying to get to the closing table is what I'm trying to say. So, I don't know if we have a real need to have a whole bunch of discussion, but if you got a question, we'll go ahead.
Just to quick, so the phase one environmental came back clean, is that what you're saying? Because there was a lot of truck activity or trucks on the aerial photograph of that property.
Right. There were two items listed on the phase one, phase one site environmental assessment, extremely minor. It was, really, it was two spots, oil spots, about five square feet each, for a total of ten square feet. And it was just really where trucks had been parked in one, in two particular spots, so you have an oil spot.
Are there still trucks there currently, or is it?
The owner, as part of this agreement, will have sixty days to remove all the equipment and supplies and things that they have on the site. I know that they had been working through this process to remove items. I don't know if the trucks are still there or not.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Okay, Carolyn, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, but, I mean, if there's any oil, or, I mean, would he have to clean up that soil? I wouldn't want us to be responsible for...
It's ten square feet.
Oh, okay.
We can scoop that up.
Okay, all right.
Barry, Lynn, Dave, Jeff, no, we're good. Everybody okay for consent?
Yeah.
Okay, Eileen, we'll put that on the consent agenda. Thank you very much, Dave, and we will move on to five point oh six. Request approval of the solicitation for offers to purchase the Mount Pleasant Middle School property. And I feel compelled, there's a gentleman that's been sitting here for three and a half hours with a Mount Pleasant shirt on. Would you mind introducing yourself? You obviously have a love of Mount Pleasant. I just wanted to at least recognize the fact you've been sitting here three and a half hours. Ron Herlock. Well, Ron, we appreciate the fact that you're here, and we appreciate the fact that you obviously have a soft place in your heart for Mount Pleasant. We'll talk about that here briefly. Board members, we've talked about this some, probably mostly, kind of in ones and twos amongst ourselves, but we've got a contract with an architect as we're moving forward to design a school on the existing site, and everybody's aware of that. We've also been talked to by the community that says, hey, we might have a better deal. There might be something else out there. Somebody might want the site. You guys need to do a little more due diligence. And so, the, sort of the middle road of that, of trying to figure out how to get from point A to point B in the most cost-effective manner, is to see if there is indeed interest in the site and in some type of proposal, but we can't negotiate with one person. We have to open it up to the public to see if there's somebody out there that's interested, and if they are, they can bring us a proposal. So this, I guess, in some sense, is an RFP, where we're asking if you, some entity or private sector firm or somebody somewhere has an idea of something they want to do with that property, we're willing to listen. And that's basically all we're doing. So we're not necessarily taking action next week, even though this says, you know, it's going to be on an action or agenda item. We're going to just wait and see what kind of feedback we get, and if we get none, we'll know that's the end of it. And before, and I'm, sorry, Dave, you haven't been able to present anything. Before we get to that, there was some question about the collateral from Mount Pleasant Middle School that was used for the QSCB, and if that question hasn't gone away, then we're, I mean, there's no need to do this. So we'll ask Mark for his comment on that.
And it is, we, the Mount Pleasant Middle School was used as part of the cops financing, so right now, they are covered by the cops. But I've talked to Dave, the county's indicated that they can move those over to Concord Middle School, which would give us clear title. Again, if we're going to use the site, we don't need to do that, but I think if we receive invitations here, we will be able to move that so that we can offer clear title to a purchaser. So I don't, that is not a barrier for you proceeding to invite offers. In other words, we can, we'll be in a position to convey clear title if there's an offer the board wants to receive. And just to echo what Mr. Kyger just told you, you're not committing yourself to anything here. The statute allows you to solicit offers, and so, and I've drafted this, we can certainly change the language if you want. I've just drafted this based on the statutory language, but the idea is, you can say, if people want this property and can offer some money, the idea is to see what level of interest there is and what kind of offers there are, so you can weigh, is it, does it make sense to try to sell this property and build elsewhere, and what kind of interest level is there? You're not bound to accept the highest offer. The legal contingency is, if you are, decide to take something, there's an upset bid process. You're going to have to then say, okay, we like this offer, but then you're going to have to advertise and allow an upset bid, and you'll have to allow the county the right of first refusal. So those are two steps that are spelled out in this offer that would have to take place before you actually consummated anything. But this is really just an invitation to the community to say, if you're interested in the property, come forward and tell us, you know, what you'd be willing to purchase and be ready to put five percent down.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Harrison, you have a comment?
Just really, just kind of rhetorical question, that the town of Mount Pleasant at one time had a resolution requesting particular actions on our part, and that resolution has been pulled back, as best as I understand. I don't know the status of some future resolution. In terms of this document, this solicitation for offers document, if somebody offered us, you know, a gazillion dollars tomorrow, it, to me, would be important to coordinate that kind of offer with the town of Mount Pleasant, so that they were a party to the ultimate decision. This does not obligate us in any way, which I do understand. However, this board needs to be extremely sensitive to the desires of the people of Mount Pleasant as expressed by their leaders. We wouldn't have time to do some survey of all the people of Mount Pleasant, I understand that, but we would have to rely upon the advice and consent of the town, town of Mount Pleasant's elected officials. And I don't know if this document captures or if it's even appropriate to do that, but I would like to make sure that we have some kind of at least gentleman's agreement to alert Mount Pleasant of whatever may come about from this kind of offer.
David, I'm going to jump in there, because I forgot to mention that I have had a conversation with Mayor Udi. So I specifically told him exactly what we were going to do and why we were doing it. So he has been told, and if you'll remember, the reason they pulled their resolution is, our boundary exceeds, far exceeds, what their districts are that they represent. And that was the reason that they told us, hey, you guys have put us in a bad spot of us having the first resolution, when we thought we were doing the right thing by going to them, as Mr. Walter's our liaison, of going to them and saying, we'd like your input. Well, we got input, and then they got, I won't say nervous, they got something and decided, no, no, we don't, we don't want, it's all yours, you guys do it. So, and then, and again, we were asked, hey, can you do a little more due diligence? So the only thing this document is doing is putting the public on notice that if there's somebody out there that wants to do something else with that site, we are open to listen to it. But we're not obligated in any way, shape, or form to do it. And I did say, I did tell Mayor Udi, if we get an offer that's good, we're going to listen. I mean, that's our duty, we have a fiduciary duty as a taxpayer to do that. You know, whether that happens or not, I couldn't tell you. So, but I think we've already addressed kind of what you just said, which is trying to take the town into account. We have done that, and I think we've more than done that, and this is now the next step. So we'll go, Mr. Walter, do you have a comment?
That's what we didn't, what we should include is another bullet point that talks about what you just said, is, what's the proposal? What's the plan? What are the thought, what do you want to do with the facility?
Yeah, the reason I did not do that is that, as I read the statute, you're not going to be able to consider the proposed purpose. In other words, if you get, you're going to have to go, particularly with the upset bid, with the highest dollar, you won't be able to say, well, we got, we got a half million dollars for a community art center and a million dollars for a shopping mall, and so we think art center at a half million is a better deal. It is a, you are selling that property, and it does need to go to whoever will pay the most. And you can't pick and choose and say, well, I like this developer versus somebody else. That's, you, once you're to sell it, you have to declare it unnecessary for school purposes, and then it just goes, you know, now, it could be subject to zoning and other stuff, but that would be up to the town, but you can't, you couldn't choose somebody that was less. And so I felt, you could add it in terms of purpose, but I think it potentially confuses your role if you're having people list purposes, and then you have a discussion about what's a better purpose versus not as good purpose, because that, under the statute, is not within the power of this board. You can decide, take it or leave it, but it's going to go to the highest offer regardless of what they plan to do with the land.
But the public would still be concerned about what purpose your building is, so I would think that would be in there, even if you specifically say that there's, we're not going to be evaluating any potential offer based on what the purpose is, but it's for informational purposes.
We could, yeah, if you want to know, knowing that I'm telling you that you can't really, you can't choose a lower offer, I'm okay adding that in, but I just, I do worry about this board debating which of the uses. This is not, it's a little different, you know, it's not the city of Charlotte selling the Eastland Mall property where they're weighing a bunch of community impacts. If it's not going to be used for school purposes anymore, you've got to basically just go with the highest bidder. So I'm happy to add it in, I just wanted to give you that caveat, that I don't think you can pick and choose who you, you take less money because you think it's a better cause or better neighborhood fit. I just don't, when you're selling, you can sell or not sell.
Maybe there's other ways to get that out, out to the public, but...
Right. And I'm okay asking what the proposal is. I guess my thought is, they probably will end up telling us more than just a number anyway, because we're asking for offers. But let me add, I'll add some, a brief description of the plans for the property. I guess the final caveat I will make is, they can say, oh, we're going to do this, and once they get title to the property, they can change. Again, consistent with zoning and everything else, it's going to be a non-binding description, but it may be helpful to get a sense of that from folks.
Okay, any other comments?
One thing I want to make sure, and I'm real concerned about, I want to make sure that, especially the individuals in Mount Pleasant understand, because I've had questions and individuals call me, that right now, as it stands, right this instant, that plans are being drawn for... plans are being drawn for that site by an architect, for that site. And I just want to make sure that that community understands that. And, because I don't, I think with what we've got before us, there may be some mispeople that do not understand that, because they're going to see that, and they're going to say, this board's trying to sell that land, because that's what it looks like to me. If I pick up the paper tomorrow and I read that, that's what it's going to look like to me. So we need to make sure that they fully understand that that's not what's going to happen. Because, Mark, explain to them what's going to happen if somebody comes in with a bid. What is going to actually happen?
Have to take it. I tried, and welcome, again, the language we can add. I tried to, in the whereas clauses, spell out that we're just doing our due diligence, because we really, we're planning, right now, we've hired an architect, we're planning on staying on that site. I think it was our assumption that with all the cost to demolish that building and do something else there, that it would probably be cost prohibitive for some, that other people would not be interested in coming in, buying the site, removing that building, and putting up some other, you know, use. And so, as a result, rather than leave some shell of a school there, it made sense for us to come in, put a new school on that site. But we got asked questions in this community meeting about, oh, we have other ideas, maybe you should do it somewhere else, or maybe other uses. And so, what I've said in the resolution, what I understood the board wanted to do is really, let's do some diligence. If someone comes forward and says, I'll give you $10 million for that property, all of a sudden, the calculus changes, and it may make a lot of sense to say, well, at $10 million, absolutely, we can go, you know, buy more property and help fund the school, and that would be great. I don't know that, there's an expectation that you're going to get that kind of offer. But if you did, you know, we should listen to it. And since we were told that other people are interested and the site may be valuable, I think this is really to test whether people really have money that they want and are really interested. Is someone a developer, somebody going to come forward and say, this is a great site, and I'm willing to pay cash for it? Then you can do it. If you get no interest or limited interest, or, you know, a $10,000 offer, well, then you've kind of got that information, and I assume we would proceed with the current plans to leave it there. So it's really, basically, formally saying, we've heard there might be interest, let's see if there is. But you're not, even if you got that $10 million offer, you're not committed to take it. I assume that at some number, the board would be very interested in saying, well, that's, you know, that's a lot, and we can find another piece of property. But you're not committing at this stage. You're simply soliciting bids. You're saying, if you're serious and you want it, great. And again, if, and if you get limited or no responses, because no one really is that interested in that property with that school on it, then you've done your due diligence, and you can proceed with the, with the plans to replace it on site. But you'll know. And I think that was the, the goal is, rather than wonder what the community feelings are, or whether there's interest, let's be formal and go ahead and formally invite people to come forward with real proposals.
And, and don't forget, we haven't necessarily lost a great deal of time with this, because the project's not fully funded anyway. So, I mean, at the end of the day, the reality is, if we were fully funded, maybe we wouldn't do this, because we'd be marching down as fast as we can to get the thing built. Well, we're not under that constraint at the moment, so it makes sense to do the due diligence that Mark's talking about doing. And at some point, at some number, we'll think we won the lottery. But the likelihood of that is highly unlikely, in my opinion. But that, you know, that's just my opinion. I know Mr. Schu wanted to make a comment, and then Mr. Schumaker also wants to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, as I've said many times over the last number of years, I have been a strong advocate for Mount Pleasant Middle School staying on the current site. And then the other issues come up about DOT, talking about they're not too favorable about closing North Drive because of the access to Highway 49 in the event of an emergency. So that's a huge concern. Another huge concern of mine is, is that we talk, we all the time talk about equity with schools. To build the Mount Pleasant Middle School on the current site will not be equitable to the other middle schools that we've built in this county. You're looking at half the acreage. And, you know, and I'm a visionary, folks, y'all know that. I like to think way down the road, long after I'm gone from this board, most of you will be gone from this board, and that is, at some point, we're going to have to replace the elementary school at some point. We're at a dead end at both places. At the elementary school, we can't do anything else than what we've got there. At the middle school, we can't do anything else there. But if we do locate there, that's all, we'll be in the same situation we're in now. We can't do anything else. We're going to have half the acreage, we won't have all the playing fields and all of that. But then again, I don't want to get too far away from the subject matter here, and that is the solicitation of offer to purchase. And that is, is like Chairman Kiger and also our attorney said, this is part of the due diligence process. You know, however, I was, I've been on the board long enough to know that we did Bethel. The Midland community wanted the Bethel school. We ended up giving it to the county. The county kept it for five years, and it got vandalized, and all of the things in the school, it just sat there. It was an eyesore until they finally ended up selling it for a very small amount of money compared to what it was worth. But then, when you compare to what it was going to cost to mitigate all of the problems, the asbestos and tearing it down and hauling it off and all of those things, it was a real blessing for the county to give it away, I think, for $25,000. And I said all that to say this, we don't want to see the same thing happen with the Mount Pleasant Middle School that happened to Bethel. Now, there might be somebody out there that would say, we'll give you, although I appreciate your positive attitude, Mark, about the 10 million, but I don't think that we'll see anywhere near that for several reasons. Well, when we, when we decide that the school is unusable, which is where we're at at this point, we just, it's a matter of time to, to get the funding. And speaking of funding, there's nothing in sight right now to show where that money's going to come from to complete the school. But what I want to see, though, as this board member, and as you know, I'll be changing hats in December, and the situation may change then, because we are subject to change. Funding is always a key issue. We know we don't have what we need here now. But I think that it's not like we've got to do this now. We hadn't got to say, hey, look, we got a deadline. We got to open this school up by 2016 or 2017, because that's not going to happen. So we've got time to do the due diligence. We've got time to look at a couple of different scenarios and make the right decision, not only for the school system, but for the students and for the citizens of Mount Pleasant and for Cabarrus County. And that will be what our job is. And I can't much blame Mayor Udi for passing the buck back to the school board, because that's what we do. Although we did, out of courtesy, want them to be involved, because it's a close-knit community. But let's think about it as far as the visionary part. You've got both the schools on one site, which is going to save the school system money in a lot of different areas. And, and down the road, you know, Mount Pleasant may become another Harrisburg at some time down the road. But I don't foresee that happening anytime in the next 10 years because of the ORED studies saying that we wasn't going to get that many more kids. So what we got is what we've got. But this is part of the due process here. And I know that we had the, we spent money to have the Bethel school appraised. I remember this board spending money, not this board, but the Board of Education, spending money to have the Old Bethel school appraised. We, I think we even went as far as to having the O'Dell school appraised at one time, because we had a potential buyer for that school, and we didn't have no potential uses for it at that time. And as I said, things change over the years. Economies change, people change, board changes, funding, everything changes. But there might be somebody out there that could throw in a half a million or a million dollars and have a, repurpose the building and use what's there for the betterment of the county, the betterment of the community, if there's someone out there that wants to do that. But, you know, I think that it would be in the best interest of the school system to think far enough ahead so that boards 15 and 20 years from now won't be going through what we're going through about where to put the school. You'll already have a site that's suitable, that's going to have the utilities, public gas, and different things like that, that will reduce costs and help that board in the future make better decisions. But, you know, I don't have a problem with us having the solicitation to offer. And I think that something is what, it's worth what somebody will pay for. But if you don't have an appraisal, you don't know what it's worth. So are we going to spend the money to have the building appraised? I don't think, I don't think that we're going to do that unless, unless there's offers, we get offers if we.
We're not going to spend any, any money.
I'm not proposing an appraisal at this juncture. I think we're simply soliciting, people want to come out and do their appraisals, they can. But I'm not proposing that this board pay for an appraisal. We simply want to.
Well, that's a good thing there, because we spent all of that money before, as I said, having things appraised, that when the end result came out, we didn't, we didn't want to deal with it, so we give it away. And my understanding, and I can't speak for the, for the county commissioners, because that's their own decision, but what I understand from talking to some of those folks, they don't want the school either, because they don't want the liability, they don't want the expense, they don't want the upkeep and all of those type things. But if this offer right here will bring somebody in that wants to pick that up and take the ball and run with it, then that'd be their choice. But anyway, that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Schumaker, we haven't heard from you. Would you like to comment?
Well, briefly, one of the nice things in this offer is that, or in this solicitation for potential buyers, is that we're asking them to come demonstrate, not only that they can put 5% down, but demonstrate that they can purchase the entire property. Now, it'll be up to us, once we get a price, if we get a price, it'll be up to us then to weigh what potential sites that may be available to us for that money, if that's enough money, and what kind of infrastructure costs that we'll have to bear for those other sites, because you'll have to run some type of sewer, you'll have to run water, you'll have to do road improvements, and all those other things that may be needed. And for us to think out of the box would be wonderful. However, currently, the county has not given us the funding that we need to think out of the box, and we have to kind of contain ourselves to where we are and think what's within, what's in the real world. This, this is a great opportunity. We'll see what it brings, offer it up to the market. The market wants to come back with something good for us, then, then great. If it doesn't, we'll continue on with where we, marching orders we've set aside for ourselves and build a school.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. I don't think we've heard from Mr. Walter. Do you have anything for, yeah, well, Barry, you just hit it. The market's going to speak. Go ahead, Dr. Phillips.
Okay. So, we definitely need the information that this solicitation will give us, whether we stay at the site or move, because as you pointed out, Mr. Chairman, we don't have enough money to build a new school yet. And so, at some point, we are going to have to go to the county, and we may have to go to the county voters to get more money. And if we haven't done our due diligence to say, we know that the route that we're taking is the cheapest route, we won't be able to convince enough people to give us that money. And so this is the way that we find out which is the cheapest route. Obviously, if we don't get any bids, that makes the decision pretty, pretty easy. And if we do get a bid, then we're going to have to do some more due diligence, which is, we're going to have to look and say, well, okay, how much would we have to pay for new land? And then how much would a greenfield site construction cost compared to this phase construction that we're looking at right now? So it's just one piece of the puzzle. Specific to the language, Mr. Enriquez, shouldn't we specify somewhere in there when we would make the property available? That, you know, we're, or are you anticipating we do a sale-leaseback and we use, you know, we rent the property as long as we need the school until we get rid of it?
That probably is a good idea. Obviously, we need to be able to continue to use the school. So.
Until we have a new school.
And I'm just thinking, too, I mean, we don't have a concrete schedule for a replacement either, which is, I guess, part of the concern. Why don't I add some language that it's an offer to purchase it at such time as the school ceases to, you know, operate? I mean, I don't know that we want to commit to.
Until a replacement is.
Yeah, until a replacement is.
Built.
Is built. Because you're right, if someone, obviously, someone in the community would know that it's being used as a school, but if other people see it, yeah, this is not something we're going to immediately make available, no matter how much they offer. We've got students in there. I will add some language to make it clear that it's a bid to purchase it, you know, at such time as a replacement school can be built. That's a good suggestion. I don't, I'm nervous about a date, because we're, I mean, for all the reasons you talked about, we don't know when we'd be able to evaluate a site and get a contract. We, I think it's, it's just very difficult. I don't think we can commit to any particular time or end of school year, but I think, you know, I think a general statement that when a replacement's constructed makes sense. What?
Whoever would buy it, just give us the rest to build the school, and we'd be okay.
If they want to fund that balance, then, then we're set. But without that balance being done, I don't see how we could commit to a date. But that, I will, that's a good suggestion. I'll add that, Chair.
I'm about to break into a song about dreaming, but I'll, I'll spare everybody. My final point is a question that Dave probably is the best to answer. So there's a reason why you've been standing up there all this time. I don't think that July 30th is long enough for bidders to put together serious offers, unless somebody's already been working on this, in which case then somebody could say, well, this whole thing is wired. So I'm worried. If you were starting out today and you wanted to do an assessment of that school and figure out, okay, how much is it worth, and then you've got to go and try to find some financing to assure yourself that you will be able to put up the money, is six weeks long enough? Because that's basically what we'd be giving people.
Actually, I think that it could be long enough. Certainly, how much fishing they have to do for a business plan, you know, certainly is, is a huge part of this. And that's probably why this is so difficult. But as far as, if you, if you've got a market, if you have a business plan, if you think it's already going to work, this is enough time to, to make the evaluations that you would want.
I'm just wondering if we would lose much by extending it to August 31st instead of July 31st?
The, as far as the design, we are making the modifications and trying to finish the contract. The modifications being what we had talked about previously, of going for the full project as opposed to the funded amount of project. So that has to finish before the design will start. But then the design is underway. If you don't anticipate much response, I don't think you're going to lose anything.
By waiting another month?
Okay.
So, that would be my recommendation, would be to change the, the deadline to August 31st, just, just to open up the window a little bit longer that if there's somebody that just now has a twinkle of an idea of what they would like to do there, that they would have sufficient time to build their business plan and get the financing lined up.
Yeah. And we are performing surveys on the property, and that's certainly something that can be shared.
Shared.
And that would save people time.
And perhaps is it, should we say, is there some way to advertise that, that, you know, we will make, make available all assessments that the, the school district owns of the property?
I'm fine either way. And again, I mean, I think it's good to give them more time. It's just a trade-off with, if you then end up getting interest, you're going to have to have, then schedule a, you're going to have to have board consideration following, you know, the receipt. So if you get it end of August, then the board would consider any offers in September, and it may take some time for us to evaluate those. I think, I mean, I'm fine changing it. It's just that if you, by the time you get offers, consider them, you'll be more crunched to make your final decision or face losing more months of moving forward in Mount Pleasant. So it's really up, it's really up to the board. We had talked and kind of thought July 31st, but August 31st is fine, too. I mean, I think it's just, we do want good, we do want good thoughtful proposals. I think that's just the, there's a judgment call there on where the right balance is.
Well, I think the day would be the 29th. That's a Friday. So that would be the most appropriate day. You know, in some sense, we're kind of doing two different things at the same time. And the sooner we can wrap up that and only do one thing at one site, the better off we are. But I think you're right. Well, that's exactly what I was, I was sitting here thinking, whether it made any sense just to split the difference and say the 15th. But either way, it'd be, I mean, we'd be on the agenda for the next, it wouldn't be until September.
End of the month makes sense, just because then you can bring it before the board at your regular meeting. So you're either going to take it up in August, or you're going to take it up in September. So I think if you're going to take it up at your September meetings, the August 29th deadline probably makes sense. That'll give, and again, we don't, we may get. deadline probably makes sense, that'll give, and again, we don't, we may get nothing, we may get 10 proposals, but you want staff to have a little bit of time to review those and get them ready to present to the board. So, the 29th of August is fine, if that's, sounds like that's a consensus.
I guess I would rather kind of get moving, but it, that, that's pretty quick. I mean, it's doable, but it's, I think Jeff makes a good point, it opens you up to, hey, was that really fair? And, I mean, the whole point we're trying to do is just to see if somebody has an idea out there. So, I think we'll go with August 29th unless anybody has a major objection. No, okay, we'll go with the 29th, and if you're gonna add language, then I think maybe we'd better go on action. I hate to not be here for that, but that's, that's fine, we'll, we'll just do the 29th so you guys can take it. So, Ms. Monroe, that will be on the action agenda, and Mr. Herlocker, we appreciate you being here. Okay, we're gonna move on to 5.07, and talk about the calendar revision. I think this is the most we've ever talked about the calendar in the whole time I've been on this board. But, we've got the, the revisions of the community meetings, I think we're gonna just leave the times to be determined. I think Jeff's the one that made the point that 6:00 was too early for people dropping kids off and going to baseball practice, or whatever they're doing, and then trying to get to a meeting, so I, you know, 6:30 is probably a better time, but maybe as the, as they get a little closer, we'll, we'll, we'll zero in on that. I hate to think we're gonna bring this up again, but I think that's the way it's gonna be. So, as it is now, we're just gonna leave those to be the... And does anybody have any comment, or anything they want to say on the, on the community meetings? Go, go ahead, Mr. Walter, no comment?
No comments, like, we're leaving it up to principal, basically, to determine.
Yeah, that's right, the principal at the local school can help us determine what time best works for them. Barry, Carolyn, Lynn, Dave, it's gone.
So, you're gonna determine the time, but we're not gonna set the time?
We're not gonna set the time tonight.
Oh, okay.
Jeff? No, okay, is everybody okay, we'll put that on consent?
I'm sorry.
We have to talk about the...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the July meeting, we've got to change to the 14th, because we misread the calendar, and we've got people out of town, so, is everybody okay with that?
The 4:00 PM, that doesn't really work for me, but I don't know how many people you need here.
The short meeting on 25th, the budget meeting, oh, that's when we do the wrap-up at the very end of the budget resolution, we want to do it 4:00 in the afternoon instead of 6:00, so you don't have to stay late just for a five-minute meeting. I get it.
For next year.
That's for next year, but that was on our calendar that we approved, and she wants to change the time. Instead of 6:00, it's 4:00. We have a board member that says he'd rather keep it at 6:00, it doesn't matter to me. Carolyn, you look confused, you know what, you found it?
Oh, well, I mean, that's for next year, I'm not...
Yeah, yeah, we might, we may or may not be here.
I may not be here.
I know, me neither. We won't ask Lynn what he thinks, he won't be here.
We, we don't care, do we?
That's right. Well, we care.
We care, we care.
Barry?
Well...
Okay, it's a 10-minute meeting.
Yep. I mean, I, I, I would prefer not to do it at 4:00 as well, since I, I have a half-hour drive, but, but, I mean, if...
We're gonna make it 6:00.
I don't know if 5:00 would do better and would work as a compromise, but...
Compromise, 5:00.
Leave early that day, I guess we could do that, I mean, it's, but I, you know.
5:00?
About 30.
5:00. I, I, I'll give you 5:00.
Okay, we'll, we'll do it at 5:00. So, the budget meeting will be at 5:00, that's better than 6:00, right? So, okay, is that everything, I missed that rolling down? Okay, so, I understand we're changing the July meeting to the 14th, we're gonna add the community meetings to the calendar at a time to be determined later, and we're gonna change the time of the budget meeting to 5:00. Everybody okay with that on consent?
That's on consent.
All right, the calendar revision will be on consent. The last item we've got is 5.08. Dr. Phillips went to Raleigh at a conference and would like us to have the hours of training credit be approved and submitted to the NCSVA. I have no reason to not recommend this approval, so as if, if nobody has any objection to that, we will put on consent. You okay with consent, Rob? We lost David, he's still going, so Jeff, you're, you're good. Okay, Eileen, we'll put that on consent. Well, Mark, we adopted the agenda that said we're going into closed session, but I think you and I decided we weren't gonna do that. Okay, well, then we will do that. I need a motion that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A 3. I have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, and a second by Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schumaker, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This board is now in closed session.